Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish a quorum?
Good morning, Supervisors Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Kennedy is absent.
Okay, if you could please read our statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, September 26th at 6:00 PM on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your public comment. Comments made by the public during the Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make an in-person comment, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call on the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come over to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes. The remainder of the agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@satcounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for other medical reasons, please see the clerk's staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@satcounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of our meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you'd please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everyone to today's board meeting proceedings. Again, also like to welcome anyone who'd wish to address the board. You're certainly more than capable of doing that, and we ask that you please complete a speaker slip and give it to one of the clerk's assistants located at the rear of chambers. We will call you in the order that we receive the slips. We ask that you please keep your comments to two minutes. That way, everyone who wishes to address the board may do so. You're welcome to address the board on any matter that is on our published agenda or any matter that's on your mind, that's not on our agenda. We are prohibited by law from discussing in any great detail any off-agenda matters, but you certainly have that opportunity to petition your Board of Supervisors should you so choose. So with that, Madam Clerk, our first item.
Item number one is public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. We do have several members of the public here this morning. Our first speaker is Don Amador.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair and members. My name is Don Amador, representing the Motorcycle Industry Council. I'm here speaking today on the Coyote Creek Solar Project that's being proposed next to Prairie City State Vehicle Recreation Area, a project that you will be reviewing for potential approval in the next few weeks. As you know, there's a coalition of environmental and OHV organizations who have gone on the record voicing strong concerns about significant short and long-term impacts to park operations, wildlife habitat, and cultural resources. MIC and others have made it clear that we generally support solar and other alternative energy projects, but that our main objection to this is the site location that places it directly adjacent to a state park unit. In early August, I met in person with two project managers at the top of Hangtown Hill, the highest location in the park, where we looked south and east from that location, east into the oak woodlands that are in question, and asked, "Is this the right site for this area?" So before you go vote on this project, I respectfully request that you go to the spot in the park, the highest spot in the park, cast your eyes southward into the project area, and ask yourself that same question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry Stortron.
Hi, Board of Supervisors. I'm very nervous. My name is Sherry Stortron.
Don't be.
Don't be. Okay, thank you.
You're amongst friends here.
That helps. I just want the Board to take into consideration the comments that were made against this project. Also, I am very concerned as an OHV user of 35-plus years what this project will do to the park. The impacts that this project will have on the existing events out at the park will heavily be impacted. So there's a lot to be considered. The environmental impact that the project is proposing, that's unbelievable. Us OHV people, we go out of our way to try to protect the environment and would never harm an oak tree. So that is just really a sad thing. And the fact that we're going to probably lose the ability to have safety training for both motorcycles and OHV four-wheelers. So that's all I have to say, but I wish you would consider another location. This up against the park is just really heartfelt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Bernardo.
Tom Bernardo, retired State Park Ranger. I sent this letter to the Board, emailed it to them. The California State Park Rangers Association, CSPRA, is a 500-plus-member organization established in 1964, the first professional ranger association in the nation, and is comprised of current and retired park professionals dedicated to the highest principles of public service. We were established to support, protect, and defend the integrity of state parks for present and future generations. The proposed Coyote Creek Agrobotanic Ranch Project is directly adjacent to Prairie City SVRA, a unit of the California State Park System. CSPRA has concerns about permanent damage to the park experience, including removal of over 3,200 blue oak trees, permanent viewshed reduction to Prairie City SVRA visitors, elimination of significant wildlife habitat in corridors, grasslands, and vernal pools from excavation operations. After a thorough review of the draft environmental impact report and consideration of arguments for and against the proposed project, CSPRA cannot support this project at this location. Therefore, the CSPRA membership voted unanimously at the annual membership meeting held on September 17th, 2025, to oppose the Coyote Creek Agrobotanic Ranch Project. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you.
Jane Artiega.
My name is Jane Artiega. I'm here to speak on the Coyote Creek Solar Project. I'm also a resident rental Cordova, and I'm a proud user of Prairie City OHV area. I'm also bringing my professional background as a retired Bureau of Land Management statewide recreational planner, where I worked to ensure that energy projects were not placed next or in a designated recreational site, and the impacts to the public were kept to the minimum. Prairie City SVRA is more than just an open space. It is one of the few places in Sacramento County where families, many in underserved communities, can safely enjoy camping, hiking, and OHV recreation. While connecting to the outdoors, as a Latina, I have brought my family and friends to Prairie City SVRA. And also, we camp there during special events. When camping on the hill, looking across the oak savanna, we share an experience that ties us to the land, to each other, to our community, and to our ancestral roots. That view, that opportunity, should not be lost. Yet, the draft environmental impact report itself admits scenic impacts to Prairie City is significant and unavoidable. It means that sweeping oak dotted hills and skies my family and thousands of others enjoy will be replaced by solar panels, electric lines, and new switchyards. I urge you to protect Prairie City SVRA by ensuring this proposal project does not come before the commission, by rejecting or relocating the Coyote Creek Solar Project to a more suitable site, one that does not come at the expense of our community, our families, and our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barb Ram.
So lately, I've been very involved with the jail and the sheriff and military equipment use policy. So I reached out to get some public records from the district attorney's office because the public defenders often tell people who are in the jail that if we go to trial, you might get the maximum sentence. And so, sort of a threat, like you should plead instead of going to trial. So I asked for the information from the district attorney's office, how many people get the maximum sentence, and how many cases go to trial. So guess how many cases go to trial? 1%. So that was in writing. I printed it off, but I forgot to bring it with me. So 1% go to trial. They don't track how many get the maximum sentence. They have no idea, deho, no idea what sentences people get. So when he talks to his attorneys, his district attorneys, deputy district attorneys, I assume that periodically they get together and talk about cases, et cetera, because he was here during the budget talk saying, "I need more attorneys, everybody's overworked." But when I ask for one little bit of information, what are the sentences that people are getting? What are his district attorneys as prosecutors getting as sentences for their people? No idea. He literally has no idea. At least, that's what the chief deputy district attorney told me. And so I just want to keep coming back to, we need more documentation. I saw here when I was sitting that the voter election office said they had a successful presidential election, except 4,000 ballots didn't get counted. 4,000 ballots didn't get counted. 4,000 ballots didn't get counted. 2% of the ballots didn't get counted, and we have an election coming up.
Rose Nguyen.
Hi, good morning. My name's Rose Nguyen. I'm the Natural Resources Consultant for California Four Wheel Drive Association, and I represent thousands of our membership that regularly utilize Prairie City SVRA, which is located adjacent to the Coyote Creek Agrobotanic Project. And I'm here to share, reemphasize some comments that we made during the DEIR public comment period, noting that the DEIR was wholly legally and procedurally flawed. It was insufficient in environmental analysis on multiple natural resource impacts, as well as social, economic impacts, and alternative site analysis. This is a deep violation of SEQA, and the DEIR needs to be revisited. On top of that, a whole party of key stakeholders were completely omitted from the planning process, from pre-scoping to scoping to release of the DEIR. And this also violates SEQA. On top of that, Sacramento County has an obligation to hold a public hearing with the OHMVR Commission, and that was not fulfilled. There was a hastily thrown-together meeting with the developers of the project a couple weeks ago, and in that meeting, they spoke to our concerns that I've just shared with you and wholly placed the legal and procedural responsibility for those flaws with SEQA and Public Resource Code on Sacramento County. And so this DEIR is legally indefensible, and it rests on your shoulders to decide whether or not to move it forward. What really needs to happen, since there have been substantive changes made to the project's scope since the DEIR was released, is that a revised DEIR needs to be drafted and recirculated for public review and public comment. The OHMVR Commission has reached out and shared their opposition, along with an invitation to you to meet with them for a public hearing, so that should also happen after release of a revised DEIR. 10 days for the final environmental impact report to be reviewed and then voted upon for approval is insufficient and introduces new violations for SEQA. So I'm here to urge you, request that you would put a pause on this, speak with your planning commission, move towards a revised DEIR, look at alternative site analysis, because as you've heard from others, there are some significant things that need to be addressed, and then reopen that for public review and comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Worth.
My name is Sean Worth. I'm the Conservation Chair for the Motherlode Chapter of the Sierra Club, 24 Northern California Counties. I want to basically agree with what Rose just said in terms of the deficiencies in the IR, and I also want to mention that we had a group of environmentalists working on our comment letter for DEIR, and generally, the length of the letter is indicative of how many problems are in the document. We had a nearly 80-page-long letter, 79 pages, and we insisted that it be looked at very carefully and that the environmental document be pulled back, all the deficiencies addressed, and then have a brand-new EIR that addressed everything. This didn't happen. Instead, we're having a final coming out later this week. 10 days later, we're having the planning commission review this. I don't understand how such a complicated issue can be digested in 10 days. We have 10 days to do it because we need to be coherent and articulate in front of the planning commission, but how can you make a decision, given such little time, on such a complicated issue with so much public input? It just doesn't make any sense. And I was at that same open house that the project proponent put on, where they put the onus of responsibility on the county. They acted as if they were a completely inactive part of this process, and the county was driving the environmental process. I have a hard time believing that, but surely, we need to take enough of a pause to make sure that we're doing this properly and that the county's not left as the only vulnerable party. So I would hopefully see you guys revisit this and allow for at least a 30-day period between when the FEAR is released and when the planning commission first looks at it. There are some severe issues with this project, and I would also note that it's the only, the only, solar project that the Sierra Club Motherlode Chapter has ever opposed, ever. And the fact that we're here with the OHV community, that doesn't happen every day. Tribal community is really concerned, everybody's super concerned about this, and all of us want to see solar. All of us want to see net zero by 2030. We can't do this by destroying our environment and destroying the jewels that we have in our region. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is David Wright.
Good morning to the Board. My name is David Wright. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I do want to talk about Coyote Creek Agrobotanic. I'm speaking on behalf of 350 Sacramento. Our goal is to reduce greenhouse gases in the atmosphere. In general, like Sean was just talking about, we approve of solar projects, but not at the expense of the environment we have around us. So we do want thousands of acres of solar panels, but not at the Coyote Creek site. We do want solar construction workers to have good solar installation jobs, but not at this location. So this project is destructive of green lands, of biological and recreational and aesthetic values, and it is a massive project. It's more than 2,000 acres. For comparison, the size of the Sacramento International Airport is, the whole property is about 2,200 acres. So along with many other organizations, as Sean Worth talked about, we submitted an over 70-page comment letter on the DEIR, and we will be commenting on the final EIR. To our understanding, the defects have not been corrected, and I would urge you to please take our comments seriously. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment. Our first item, our next items are timed, so if it pleases the Chair.
Before we get to that, so again, I just want to remind everyone that spoke on the solar project that we cannot discuss in detail this morning. The concerns that you've expressed, we can't address those because of the Brown Act, because it's not on our published agenda for today. However, I'm looking to Mr. DeFonte to see if he knows off the top of his head when, or Mr. Smith, who I see in the cheap seats back there, when this is going to be scheduled so that those who addressed us on off-agenda today have that reminder planted in the back of their minds about when they can come and expect the Board to fully deliberate on the project.
November 18th, it's tentatively scheduled to come to the Board.
Okay, so it's tentatively scheduled for November 18th, so you might want to pencil that in on your calendar should you, again, wish to join us here in chambers and perhaps witness a bit more robust conversation about the project. Okay, now we can get to the next part of our agenda.
So we'll skip over to our consent matters, item 4 through 37. I do have clerk comments, and we do have public comments, so I'll read those into the record. Do have clerk comments, clerk notes for item number 10, which is to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 16.86 of the Sacramento County Code relating to metro airpark. We did lawful reading and continued this item from September 9th, 2025. We also do have one public comment for item number 21. Would you like to take that public comment now?
Sure, but first, let me ask my colleagues to see if they would like to pull any item from consent or items for separate vote or discussion. I do see that Supervisor Hume is in the queue.
You want me to do that now?
Yeah.
Sure. All right, thank you, Chair. I just have a question on item 15.
So I will read that into the record. Item number 15 is authority to execute agreement numbers 81739, 81776, and 81777 with the County of Yolo Recology Ostrom Road and California Wood Recycling, Inc., DBA Aggraman, and the Amendment Number 1 to Agreement Number 70811 with the City of Sacramento respectively for organic material diversion services.
Great, thank you. And for the record, I did have a conversation with Keith, who's in the audience, about this issue, so I'm fairly up to speed on the process. But my curiosity is, given that we had a 10-year option and a 20-year option, was the reasoning for the 20-year option due to amortization costs of what would be required upfront in order to switch over to a different technique or technology? And why I'm asking this, I just remember the last time we considered this item, it felt like the decision from the Board was, we're going to go ahead and exercise this option in order to wait for the world to catch up to maybe where we wanted to be.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Jennifer Claiborne. I am with the Department of Waste Management and Recycling, Division Chief over Collections and Transfer. And to answer your question, the real difference between the 10-year and the 20-year option really came down to more of the proposals that were in front of us at that time. There were different technologies and different levels of risk that the evaluation committee was willing to take, so it wasn't purely upon the length of the contracts. That was something that was considered. As you'll note, the 10-year also has additional extensions, additional five one-year contract extensions, so the evaluation committee was not concerned about going longer. It was more about the combination of different things that the evaluation committee looked at that distinguished between those two different proposals.
And so if I can maybe parse what you just told me, if the other option had also been a 10-year term, it still might not have competed well.
That is correct.
Okay. And then the final question is, is given there are multiple vendors within that 10-year option, was that the original pool of vendors that we have under our existing contract?
So staff, we collectively worked with the City of Sacramento staff, as well as City of Folsom, so that we can combine all of our tenages for our best opportunity for the lowest cost. And to be able to reduce our greenhouse gases on where we collect the materials. So the proposals all came in individually, and then we did an analysis that looked at several different things that allowed us to then kind of put together a puzzle of utilizing different vendors in different locations so that we could reduce the greenhouse gas emissions from our collection trucks. And so we have an area where we consolidate up in the north area of the county, as well as the south area of the county. So that's how we kind of created this very massive analysis where we can do what we call a compatibility analysis. That's how we kind of paired up different vendors to help meet our different needs across the whole county, with the cities as well.
Final question.
Yeah.
Two of the three vendors have anaerobic digestion as part of their solutions.
Correct.
Do we have an idea of the percentage of waste that will do that, and then do we know what happens to the byproduct, the recycled, if you will, end product?
So I don't have the specifics and percentages.
Okay.
We do have some of the vendors here, if you'd like that now, where we can come back and let you know more in detail. But there is a smaller percentage that goes to anaerobic digestion, because what they're doing is they're pulling out the food waste portions of the organic material, and that is a much smaller portion of our organic material that we collect from residents. We also utilize the green waste material that's collected at our facilities, and so, as you can imagine, that's all green waste, and that material is better composted than digested. So what they're doing is they're focusing in on the portion of the organic material that is best utilized in anaerobic digestion.
Very good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'll go ahead and move consent items 4 through 37 for approval.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. However, I believe we have a public speaker on item 21.
That is correct, so I'll read that into the record. Item number 21 is authorization to execute an agreement with Jamie Mason for in custody vocational training services in the amount of $95,460 for the period of October 19th through October 17th of 2026. And we have one speaker, Barb Ram.
So I just wanted to comment on this because, so $95, almost $96,000 doesn't seem like a lot compared to $9.2 billion county budget, but I didn't see any reporting on, is Jamie's $95,000 worth it? Like, how many people are getting jobs? How many people are staying in their jobs? How many people is it a living wage? Like, why are we paying her $85 an hour if it's not working? All I want to know is, is it working? So I guess I just, and if there is a report, if there is documentation somewhere, where is it? Because I keep looking on the county site, and it would just be super helpful if there were. were reports of where I could, you know, where I can find things. I’m just not that good at it, so that’s, that’s my only thing. If, if what she’s doing is working, great. If what she’s doing isn’t working, then why are we continuing with this contract? And so I just wanted clarification on whether or not it’s working. And I just wanted to say one thing back to my initial off-topic, the public defender said basically, almost never are people given the maximum sentence in their head. There’s no documentation of that, but off the top of the public defender’s head, most people don’t get it, so that’s my only thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our public speakers on consent.
That is correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously with those members present.
Okay. In terms of agenda management, Madam Clerk, what would you prefer we do at this point?
We will go to item number 38, which is our first time matter. And for those members of the public that are watching, we will go back to items two and three after 10:15. So item number 38 is approval of Sacramento Employment and Training Agency operating budget for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Good morning, Board. My name’s Anita Maldonado, and I’m proud to serve as Sacramento Employment and Training Agency’s Executive Director. I have with me today some staff members, Mario Maslach, our Fiscal Chief, and Michelle Locam, Workforce Development Manager. We do have a presentation for you today.
I’m waiting for Metro. Okay, but they’re putting that presentation up now. It’s item number 38.
While we’re waiting for that today, I’d like to talk to you a little bit about SETA’s Agency Overview and Board Governance, our fiscal overview, our potential federal impacts, and our potential federal impacts on SETA programs. Sacramento Employment and Training Agency, otherwise known as SETA, is, was formed in 1978 as a joint powers agency of the city and county of Sacramento. We provide health and education services to young children, job training, employment opportunities, and funding to neighborhood-based organizations that provide program and services to low-income communities to help combat poverty, including employment, acculturation, and social services for refugees and other specific immigrant populations. Our mission is to transform lives by supporting programs and partners that empower people to thrive, and we do that with the collaborative work that we do with our partners and our community-based organizations every day throughout the county of Sacramento. We’re governed by our SETA governing board. Our Chair, Supervisor Desmond, along with Supervisor Kennedy, serve on the county side. Our two city reps, Councilmember Mayveng and Councilmember Mayor Protem Eric Guerra, serve on the city side, and then we also have a community rep position that’s currently vacant. With that, we also have three advisory boards that serve in an advisory capacity. First, as a Head Start grantee, we have the Head Start Policy Consuls and Advisory Committees. Head Start serves well over 4,000 children from 0 to 5 years old through countywide. Funding is provided through Head Start, Early Head Start, and the California Department of Education programs. We also provide health, nutrition, and mental health screenings. Also, as the Designated Workforce Investment Board, we have the Sacramento Works Board, and through that, we operate 13 American Job Centers throughout the county. These centers integrate employment, education, and training resources to over 30,000 customers per year through grants by Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act in collaboration with Employment Development Department and the County Department of Human Assistance and various other nonprofit organization. And as well, we are the Designated Community Action Agency, and as such, an advisory board for CSBG. CSBG funding is the most flexible funding that we have, and with that, we provide case management, emergency shelter, transportation assistance, emergency food, services for at-risk youth, and, and all of the ancillary services to the most underserved populations in Sacramento County. Also within that department, we also administer refugee support services, grant funding that include vocational, employment, social adjustment, and culture orientation services. This is just a snapshot of our agency structure. We operate around countywide 112 Head Start Centers in conjunction with our five delegates and our two partners. Through our workforce program, we have 110 subcontractors through workforce development. As I mentioned previously, also 13 Job Centers, and total SETA employees are about 577. This is our district and county presence with the red dot designated as our Head Start, Early Head Start Centers, and then the blue dot designated as our Job Centers. We recently implemented a strategic plan that really go over three main initiatives, and that’s to improve awareness, strengthen cohesion, and to continue to build partnerships. Right now, I’d like our Fiscal Chief, Mario Maslach, to come up and provide a quick overview on our budget.
Good morning, Board Chair and Board Supervisors. My name is Mario Maslach. I’m SETA’s Fiscal Chief. For the fiscal year 25-26, the budget amount is just shy of $137 million, and it is 100% grant-funded. This is about a $5 million decrease from a prior year. As you can see, the Children Family Services accounts for about 73% of our budget, while 27% is allocated to the Workforce Development Department. Salaries in fringe account for 43.64%, subrecipient and client obligations 42.01%, operating costs are 14.11%, and fixed assets account for just 0.24%. Looking more closely at the Children Family Services budget, which is just over $100 million, by source, 85.05% comes from Head Start grants, 6.75% comes from California Department of Education, 6.35% comes from the California Department of Social Services, and 1.85% comes for Child and Adult Care Food Program funds. By categories, salaries in fringe account for 49.32%, delegates and partners, these are our pass-through organizations, receive 35.89% of the funding. The operating cost is 14.46%, and fixed assets are 0.33%. Now focusing on the workforce development budget, that’s about $36.9 million. By source, 43.84% is coming from the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act, 35.21 for refugee services, 7.06% from CSBG, Community Service Block Rents, and 13.89% in a number of other funding sources. By category, 58.6% goes through our subrecipients and client obligations as pass-throughs, 28.24 goes to salaries in fringe with a 13.16% operating cost. Before I turn things over back to Anita to cover the individual impacts to our budget, I wanted to ask if you have any questions specifically on any light items or anything.
Any questions?
I do. I have a question. So, thank you for the presentation. I, you know, I’ve been here nine months, and I haven’t had a chance to really understand what SETA does. I know I’ve heard about it from here and there, and so I can now see that it really is about workforce development and working with children and family services. Is that really like the main, the main?
Correct. Those are the two main areas, yes.
And so on the Workforce Development Department, is that where somebody may be looking to develop skills, and they will come to SETA, and then you will connect them into, say, a training, into a department? Okay. Do you work closely with other, like the BIA that has, I think there’s like a department that somebody can learn plumbing, electrician, and they can go through a training? Do you work with those type of organizations to help people get into some of these jobs?
Yes, we work with a number of CBOs. I’ll turn it over to Anita to...
All right, thank you. Thank you, Anita.
Sure, yes. Through our, our Job Centers, we have our basic services, but if they need more intensive services, we do have a training provider list that we can direct folks who are interested in any particular field, and we continue to build that list. So, yes.
That’s awesome. And so, do you have to qualify under a certain financial range to be able to get some of the training or services, or is it, can anybody?
There are certain qualifications that you have to meet to go into the more intensive training, but the basic services is open to anyone.
Okay. And then on the Head Start part, tell me a little bit about what that looks like for SETA.
Well, what we do is we provide comprehensive services to children and their families. We have SETA-operated Head Start Centers, but we also partner with school districts, and through their school districts, we offer Head Start services to the children in their particular areas, and it’s health and nutrition. It’s working to strengthen families. It’s working to work with the children to strengthen their skills and to get them pre-K ready.
Oh, that’s great. And so, you know, one of the areas that really concerns me is literacy, you know, children being prepared by kindergarten, predominantly in the lower socioeconomic neighborhoods where reading hasn’t really been a big part. So do you work with preschools to help with that readiness for kids?
We actually prepare them in the classrooms through our Head Start program to make them ready for kindergarten. So we do all of the literacy. We partner with other agencies and other experts to come into the classroom, particularly to help our children to learn, you know, to teach them to read, to have them prepared for that, for, to enter school.
And so is Head Start, like, is it Head Start a preschool or a daycare?
We like to see, we like to say it’s more than a preschool or daycare because it does provide holistic services for the entire family, including how they eat, how to prepare meals, everything that it takes holistically, and it, we like to say that Head Start doesn’t just help the children, it helps the entire family, and there are programs and services, case management for families as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You’re welcome.
Any other questions?
I’d like to end by just adding that, you know, with this administration, every single one of our programs are at risk. And what that means is that the safety net for these families, the most underserved families in Sacramento County have no place to place their kids in a Head Start program. They, the refugees, they have nowhere to go to find support. Through our CSBG program, we provide rent assistance. We provide, you know, ancillary assistance that perhaps other grants don’t cover, so that CSBG flexibility is going to be gone. Through our WEOWA programs, we have job seekers who won’t have those basic services to come in, like resume writing, like how to dress for an interview, access to employers and training. All of that is at risk with the administration if they were to cut our programming. Happy to answer additional questions on that.
I have a question, instead of getting in the queue. So have you seen cuts already impacted to your programs?
Well, we receive flat funding through our Head Start program, but through our WEOWA programs and the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, there are some potential cuts that have not gone all the way through the appropriations process, but that we’re at risk for. And with the Head Start program, flat funding is a cut, because we have to continue to have increases in costs without having an increase in, in the grant.
Yeah, and I did look at the report that had, where you had cuts in certain areas, but then other areas had increases.
Yes.
Anita, can I, can you just answer one more question? It’s about First Five and Head Start. What, how do those two compare?
First Five, I believe it’s county-run through the Tobacco Funds Program.
Oh, okay.
Head Start is a direct federal-funded program through HHS, so that’s the main difference.
Got it.
And we provide stricter performance standards where the program is more heavily, has compliance requirements that I believe the First Five does not have.
Let me, let me shed some light on the answer, because I’ve been chairing First Five for 15 years. So you’re right, in terms of the funding, we’re funded by a tobacco tax, as is every other First Five in the state of California. There’s one per county, and that’s a result of the Passage Prop, Proposition 10 by the state’s voters in 1997, I believe it was. And the mission of First Five, separate from SETA, is very surgical, it’s very specific. The name itself, First Five, alludes to the fact that we, in our mission, are intent on providing early childhood development services, resources, health resources, even dental and oral resources, and we set policy around that, and we have a strategic plan for kids aged zero to five. So whereas SETA, I’m guessing, probably doesn’t necessarily have any bookends on age that are as restrictive as First Five, we do. In terms of compliance, I would disagree a bit, because we do certainly hold ourselves very accountable, because regardless if it’s tobacco tax dollars at the state level or federal dollars, they’re taxpayer dollars. So we’re making sure that the application of those taxpayer dollars are being used for what they’re intended to be used for, and that they’re being used for the intent of fulfilling the mission of First Five. So just to shed a little light.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond?
Yes, before you go, Anita, I just wanted to be the last to chime in here as the Chair, of course, of SETA. But thank you for, for being here today, and thank you, David, for, for bringing Anita in for a full presentation instead of just doing this on, on consent. I think it was important for us to obviously hear about SETA, about the financial conditions, and some of the impacts at the federal level. Anita did attend cap to cap, and we did, Councilmember Geta and I went with Anita to do a little advocacy for Head Start, continued Head Start funding, obviously we need more, but there is a lot of bipartisan support for the work that we do at SETA, and so that advocacy will continue. But really appreciate all, all that you do, Anita, and appreciate the opportunity to serve on the board. And I also appreciate Supervisor Rodriguez’s questions, and I would say, visit a Head Start Center or Resource Center, I mean, it’s really inspiring. You’ll see the impact it has, not only on the children, but on the families, like you said, so, and they’re, and they’re spread throughout the county, so I would really encourage you to go to, go take that tour. The SETA staff is always happy to show off the great programs and great services they deliver. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. I would be remiss if I didn’t mention we’re having a grand opening of our new Early Learning Center at Marisol Village just tomorrow at 9:00 AM. Encourage you all to attend, and would love to host anyone to come to SETA. Thank you very much.
Proudly in District One. Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I just wanted to mention, you know, we brought a presentation to you earlier in September about some of the federal adjustments and, and different changes to the programs, and one of them is to ensure that folks on certain social services benefits are working or looking for employment, or volunteering, or a host of other requirements. And SETA has been a great partner with, with that, and helping us at least find some resources and opportunities for folks, along with Deputy County Executive Siobhan Kathkari. They’ve been working really close together, and I just wanted to say thank you to Anita and her team, and the SETA team for their assistance in helping us with that, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, David, and I too want to thank Anita and her colleagues at SETA, certainly have a great appreciation for that sister agency, and know it perhaps best through my late father’s work and his presence on the SETA board for years. I do want to take the opportunity to publicly thank the current SETA Chair, my colleague, Supervisor Desmond, and in abstentia Supervisor Kennedy for their service and leadership on the SETA board for, for years, in fact. So we all have other various commitments for different boards and commissions, and I know both these gentlemen apply a lot of thoughtful consideration when it comes to helping Anita with direction and management and fulfillment of the mission of SETA. So thank you, Supervisor Desmond, and wherever you are, Patrick, thank you. So, all right. So, all right. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign to speak on this matter?
We have one speaker, Ms. Barbara Ram.
Thank you. I also have a lot of commitments in my life and, you know, but here I am. And I, when I was looking at the agenda items, I went through the presentation that SETA was going to give. And I was also, it's worth $137 million taxpayer here. I don't smoke, but sometimes I buy cigarettes for the people when they're released from jail, and they seem to appreciate that. So, carton of cigarettes is $150 now. So, again, I'm going to have to point out that $137 million in funding, and I'm sure they do great work, but wouldn't it be great if part of the presentation was what they actually did? How many kids graduate? Where do they go? Are we following them, and are they successfully getting through school? How many families are kept together? Are kids going into foster care? Are kids coming out of foster care? Like, anything, like, how many people actually get jobs? How many people keep those jobs? What is the 137 million, I'm just rounding up, dollars getting us over and over and over again? I just don't know how to point it out anymore. We aren't getting any data. So, if you don't have data, then how do you determine cuts in a budget are going to have a negative impact? We don't even know that. Well, we definitely know it's probably going to impact something, but maybe we don't even need a program that we're paying for. But how do you know? How do you guys know? And where's the report? Where on the website do I find the report that says we do need all of these programs? We do need the $137 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would encourage the speaker to attend a SETA Board meeting, ask some of these questions, and also reach out to the SETA staff. I know they'd be very happy to provide you with some information about the return on the investment with the public dollars. And with that, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the SETA budget.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Chair will second. Okay. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Well, I was going to ask a question about whether, whether the speakers had some information or some background on the outcomes. You may not have actual data, data on you, but if you can just provide us a very high level overview, because that's a very, I mean, Ms., Barbara brings up some very important topics.
Sure. First, I'd like to point out that most of our funding comes from grant-funded, direct HHS, WEOWA, federal dollars. And so, those dollars have performance standards, and I'm happy to provide that report to the speaker. We have many outcomes that we report on. I did not bring any of those with me today, but I'm happy to provide those. I do have our refugee expert here to talk a little bit about our refugee numbers and outcomes.
Good morning. Michelle O'Cam. I'm a manager in SETA's Workforce Development Department, and I oversee the funding that comes down from the Office of Refugee Resettlement to serve our newly arriving refugees to our community. Our funding is available to those that have entered the United States within the last 60 months, so five-year period. For the last three years, we've served over 3,500 each year with entered employment anywhere from 62% to 65%. It's really strong entered employment for individuals who come here with oftentimes limited English, limited work experience in the United States, so if any, and sometimes pre-literate in their native language in their home countries. So, the average wage at this, well, let me see. I've actually got performance for this year. We're going to wind down this year, serving 3,200. At this point in time, we're sitting about 58% entered employment. That doesn't mean that those that have not been, become employed are left at the end of the program year, which ends on September 30th. They will continue to receive services from us until we place them into employment. The average wage is just under $19 an hour, and 63% of who we serve are on cash assistance. So, our, it's very critical, especially with the changes, recent changes to the Refugee Cash Assistance Grant, which has changed their support, cash aid support from 12 months down to four months. And that's from date of application for those, that assistance. It's very critical that we engage them as quickly as possible, provide them skills development, provide them job readiness, and what it's, what work is about in the United States, and get them connected to employment as quickly as possible. So, in all of our grants, program accountability, fiscal accountability is always just as important and critical as the services themselves. If we, if we aren't demonstrating the effectiveness of our programs, then they're not going to be, there aren't going to be further investments. So, I think we, all the grant funds, we have monthly reports, we have quarterly reports, we have end of year reports, and I believe we can provide numbers on all of them.
So, can I just ask a question on that topic? So, I get supporting the refugees, but do you guys also work with those that are exiting the prison system or formerly incarcerated to help get them training? I, I'm a, I'm a big believer in rehabilitation, and so, can you just tell me a little bit about that topic of the organization or that area?
We just received a grant from the State Bureau of Corrections to help those coming out of prison, to help them with employment. Prop 47, I believe, is what it is, to help them with mental health and those who've been convicted of drug offenses. And we're going to be working with Emerged Careers out of San Diego to help support that grant. That's, it's, it's not even been approved by our board yet. It's going to be on the agenda for next month.
That's great.
But we do have a prison-to-employment grant that we've had in the past. I'm happy to say that this grant is going to help support that population once again.
That's great. Yeah, Anita, I will reach out to you. I'd love to have a little more discussion on SETA overall. Thank you.
I'd love that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you please show the vote tally? Thank you.
That item does pass unanimously with those members present.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item, we are going to go back on our agenda to item number two. And item number two is a presentation recognizing September 27th as National Public Lands Day and free day use entry into the American River Parkway, Gibson Ranch, Mayfair Regional Park, and Sacramento River and Delta Sites operated by the Sacramento County Regional Parks.
Morning, Liz.
Good morning. I have a presentation if that could be brought up. And while we're waiting, oh, there it is. I just want to remark upon the fact that our Regional Parks Department has a partnership with SETA, and we utilize their workforce program to help us with some of our work in our parks. And we've, we've really been grateful for that partnership.
Thank you.
All right. Let's talk about Public Lands Day, which is this Saturday. Every year, it is the fourth Saturday of September. It is the largest national day of volunteering in our public lands. It is also a day where typically, public lands are available for free entry for folks so that we can reduce any financial barriers so that folks have the ability to enjoy their public places. And we've got lots of things to do in Sacramento. Like I mentioned, we have free entry in all of our Sacramento County Regional Parks. Thank you very much for your support on that. We have family fun. We invite you, I think, last time I was up here, someone asked me if I had an otter. Yeah, that's all we.
Probably was me, I'm guessing.
I did not have the staff person come in our otter costume today because it's going to be a warm day, so I didn't want to do that to them. But we do have an otter costume. Someday, I'll bring that out.
There we go.
Family fun bio blitz. So, what is a bio blitz? Well, if this will move forward, I'll tell you.
It's not a mad rush to the restroom, is it?
No. That would be funny. But no. All right. Well, if I can't get this to move forward, I'll just go old school. Talk about, yep, nope, not going to work. There we go. All right. So, bio blitz, nature at your fingertips. So, basically, you go out, you could download an app on your phone, and you can go out, and let's say you see a little critter, and you're like, what is that little critter? It's not a squirrel. What is it? So, you take a picture, you upload it, and then all kinds of people that are involved with this bio blitz are able to tell you, iNaturalists are able to tell you, hey, that's, I don't know, a rat, or whatever it is. But they can tell you all about all the creatures, all the plant diversity that's in our park system. And it also uploads into an area where we can use that same data to say, hey, there's this special plant that's on the American River Parkway, and they found a specimen of that. So, there is an actual national bio blitz. Just kidding.
The machine is right above you. My screen should point it up.
Maybe I'm going the wrong way. Thank you. You would think I would know by now. So, if you download this QR code, you can be part of the National, National Public Lands Day Bio Blitz all over the entire nation.
Can you go to the next slide, Metro?
All right. So, we have a lot of things happening at Consumnis River Preserve. And at the Consumnis River Preserve, we have...
Next slide.
Native garden and trail cleanup, invasive aquatic species removal, native plant planting, and restoring avian habitats. We do ask that you sign up in advance for these activities because lunch will be provided. Next slide. But we want to keep the party going, and we're going to have a Sunday Fun Day Community Paddle for free as well at the preserve. So, hopefully, we'll see some of you out there. Next slide. And then finally, at Gibson Ranch, we have a volunteer project for our community garden. We are very, very close to opening up our community garden for allowing people to have plots out there. And we're going to do some projects where we're spreading...
Pots for gardening?
Gardening, yes.
Okay.
Gardening plots, to be very clear. We'll be spreading some mulch, working on irrigation, and otherwise getting it ready and putting together a demonstration plot for people to see. So, hopefully, that's where I will be. So, hopefully, I might see some of you out there as well. Thank you so much for your support of Public Lands Day, and I will see you again soon. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Liz. This is great. I just downloaded the iNaturalist app, so I'm definitely going to check that out.
Yes, on all your walks. So, I'm sure you'll be able to share a lot of data.
In fact, I was just going to go there. I was going to say, yesterday, I walked to the office from Natomas and went through Discovery Park and, of course, saw all the early staging for Aftershock. But as I crossed over Steelhead Creek, I just was pretty amazed at how great the condition is of the creek. So, again, thanks to you and your staff, but also thanks to our partners, River City Water Alliance, for all they're doing, and it's going unnoticed. Certainly had a chance to see for myself all the great product of volunteerism and, again, that working partnership with our Regional Parks Department. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for staff? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign to speak on this?
We do not, Chair.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Item number three is a presentation proclaiming October 2025 as Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign Month.
Good morning.
Chris Flores, Director of the Department of Agriculture, Weights and Measures. It's our honor this, this year to host the Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign during the month of October. Helping us this year is also Lisa Travis in County Council, along with Janaya Monasterio and the Environmental Management Department. As you know, this is an annual event where in the month of October, county employees have the ability to raise money and donate to their favorite charities. This year's theme is "Public Service is What We Do; Giving Back is Who We Are." There are seven charity federations participating this year, linked to hundreds of charities, so giving back is really easy. Supervisor Rodriguez, you mentioned that literacy is important to you, especially in early childhood development. And one of the federations on Monday actually spoke to that, and they're, one of their charities actually ensures that children of a certain age get a free book every month. And I thought that was really special. So, I think there's a charity that speaks to everybody out there. And we focused on, you know, just giving a dollar per paycheck, you know, can make a huge difference in someone's life. So, I want to mention the participating federations are America's Best Local Charities, America's Charities, CHC, Creating Healthier Communities, Earth Share, Global Impact, the Sacramento Region's St. Vincent de Paul Society, and the United Way in California Capital Region. I'd like to thank these groups for assisting us in this worthy cause. Our goal for the month of October is to raise $225,000 with at least an 8% participation rate. So, we're, we're pushing up the goal a little bit this year. I happen to know that there might be a department who wants to continue their tradition of being the department who raises the most money. And I also know that there's a department out there who wants to maybe knock them off of their podium. So, it looks like we might have a little healthy competition this year. And to help departments in kind of their fundraising activities, one of the employee giving campaign teams has created, let's see, okay, they created a booklet full of fundraising ideas for departments. So, not only will Matt's team at the Department of Water Resources probably be making burritos again this year for staff, there's a whole slew of different fun activities in here where departments can get together. I think it's a really good team-building activity as well, and just shows the caring nature of Sacramento County employees.
They can call me. I can roll a burrito.
Let's, oh, yeah.
They can call me for help. I'll volunteer there.
Yeah. Also, finally, on October 30th, Liz Baez and her team at Parks is going to be hosting our 5K employee run at Discovery Park. We have, just my flyer for that. This is great. There we go. And since it's the day before Halloween, of course, county-appropriate costumes are always encouraged. There will be a costume contest again this year. This is a super fun event for 500 of our employees to participate in. And with that, on behalf of the employee giving campaign, I just want to thank you for your support.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, thanks to all of our departments and the individuals therein who participate every year. And this is a tradition that I've become very close to and certainly have a lot of admiration for over the years. To know that your, you know, intent is to raise not tens, but hundreds of thousands of dollars is something special, and it's always a very thoughtful endeavor that doesn't go unnoticed by this board. So, I just want to thank everyone involved, and appreciate the presentation this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Madam Clerk, anyone sign to speak on this matter?
We do not.
I'm going to give them to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is number 39. This is PLMP 2024-00003 and PLMP 2024-00069. This is the Calvine Chevron, which is a zoning ordinance amendment, use permit, design review, and a letter of public convenience of necessity for the sale of alcohol with the type 20, ABC license for a property that's located at 8881 Calvine Road, approximately 275 feet northwest of the intersection of Elk Grove, Florin Road, and Calvine Road in the Vineyard Community. The applicant is a K-12 architect, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration. I do need to do an oath for this item, so any members of the public or staff that wish to address the board about item number 39, if you could please stand to be sworn. And so, please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So, help you, God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm? So, when you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
And before we hear from staff... And before we hear from staff on this matter, I just want for the record to acknowledge the fact that my understanding is that Supervisor Kennedy has been fully briefed on this matter. This is a project that's located in District 2, so I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that fact. So, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Chair Serna. Members of the board, my name is Christian Balthazar. I'm an associate planner with Planning Environmental Review, and I was the lead planner for both of the Calvine Chevron projects. Starting off with location and setting, the subject site is located at 8881 Calvine Road in the Vineyard Community and consists of a singular parcel totaling 2.5 acres in size. The site is currently vacant. The subject site is within the light commercial or LC zoning district and borders the city of Elk Grove to the south. To the west is a tire shop, and to the east is a general retail, both of which are also zoned light commercial. To the north, the site is a newly developed daycare, also zoned light commercial. And abutting the site to the northwest is a multifamily apartment complex zoned RD20. In terms of entitlement history, the subject site has had three previous planning entitlement. The first included approval of a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, rezone, and tentative parcel map by the Board of Supervisors on August 29th, 2007. The approval reads on the site to present day zoning. Additionally, there was a tentative parcel map that was approved with this request that was never recorded and subsequently expired. This project did, however, include plans for development of a commercial shopping center consisting of three buildings along with associated parking and landscaping. At the time of approval, there were no specific uses or businesses anticipated to occupially propose commercial retail buildings. However, our project exhibits included a defined site plan and landscape plans for future development, and the rezone ordinance was conditioned to comply with these exhibits. One of the requested entitlements being brought forward to you today is a zoning ordinance amendment to remove this condition from the rezone ordinance to allow alternative site development. The final approval documents for this previous project are included as attachment four of your hearing packets. Along with this, there have been two previous planning entitlement requests for the site. These included a major and discretionary design review for a new 26-unit multifamily apartment and new retail building, as well as a zoning ordinance amendment request to modify previously established conditions of approval to allow for alternative site development. However, both of these requests were subsequently withdrawn. Additionally, staff also reviewed recent code enforcement violations, has concluded that there are no active cases. And just to note, the aerial imagery to the right is from 2006, where the site was developed with a single-family home. In terms of entitlement requests, this request does include two applications that are being processed concurrently. The first of which is a development request consisting of a zoning ordinance amendment to modify the rezon conditions for the adopted rezon ordinance related to proposed development, a conditional use permit to allow an automobile fueling station, a 24-hour convenience store within 500 feet of residential, and a drive-through car wash. Along with that, there is also a design review to determine substantial compliance with design guidelines. And then the applicant is also requesting a letter of public convenience or necessity for a type 20 liquor license at a new convenience store. On screen here, we have the proposed site plan. The project is proposing a new fueling station with six double-sided product dispenser stalls, a 5,347-square-foot convenience store, a 1,713-square-foot car wash, and a 5,382-square-foot retail building. Along with these structures, a fire turnaround is also proposed for the site, and this is shown on the northern portion of the lot around the proposed retail building. Just for site orientation, Calvine, the left side of your screen, is going to be south, and then right side of your screen is going to be the north orientation. This driveway around the retail building is the proposed fire turnaround. The proposed parking lot would contain a total of 49 parking spaces, and access to the lot would be taken from Calvine Road. Additionally, a seven-foot-tall masonry wall is also proposed along the northwestern portion of the parcel, and this is where the only alongworthy property abuts multifamily residential. And that is going to be shown right here along this northwestern side of the lot. Here we have the proposed landscape plans for the site. The applicant is proposing the removal of all existing trees on site, with the exception of an oak tree on the southeastern corner of the lot. Additionally, a total of 62 new trees are proposed. Four trees would be along the project frontage on Calvine Road, and a number of parking lot shade trees are also proposed to meet parking lot shade standards. Additionally, six detention basins are proposed and perimeter landscape planters on the west, north, and east sides of the lot.
Christian, before you leave that particular slide, can you tell me what the tree planting schedule is for the area immediately adjacent to the car wash? Do you know what those species is?
Not off the top of my head. I think the applicant might be able to speak a little bit more on that.
Okay. So for the applicant, before you come up here and speak, my interest is understanding how or if that particular tree planting, those particular species are... were considered in terms of the need or interest in both screening, visual screening, and noise abatement associated with the car wash.
On screen here, we also have the building elevations. Here we have the south and east sides of the proposed convenience store and car wash building. Both of these uses combined are proposed to be 7,060 square feet in size. And here we also have the north and east elevations of the proposed retail building. At this time, there are no tenants selected for these buildings. Lastly, here we have the elevations for the fueling station canopy area. As previously mentioned, six double-sided product dispenser stalls are proposed. Additionally, the elevations of all of these proposed structures from all other directions are also included in your hearing packets as attachment five. On screen now is a map depicting the total number of currently active off-site liquor licenses, vacant lots, schools, daycares, and census tracts within one mile of the project site. A PCN letter approved by the board is needed when a request for an off-site liquor license is made within a high-crime area or where there is an overconcentration of off-sale licenses. For this site specifically, Census Track 93.17 has an allowance of four off-sale liquor licenses, of which only one is currently active. This means that approval of a PCN request would not result in an overconcentration of off-sale liquor licenses in the area. However, the project site is located within the Vintage Park Churchill Downs area, which is considered a high-crime area by the Sheriff's Department's 2024 crime map. This is why the PCN request is being brought forward to you guys today. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project and was released for public review on June 17th of this year. The document discussed the topics listed on the slide here and concluded that the project would result in less insignificant impacts with the implementation of mitigation measures. The proposed project was reviewed by the Design Review Advisory Committee, or DRAQ, on September 12th of 2024. During the meeting, DRAQ members expressed no concerns with the proposed use for the site. They mentioned that the current site is underutilized, given it is currently vacant, and that the proposed plans would be an overall improvement to the site as a whole, given the addition of proposed landscaping. DRAQ members also recommend the Board of Supervisors finally project in substantial compliance with design guidelines. Along with that, the Vineyard CPAC may on September 12th of 2024 to hear and consider the project. A quorum was not able to be established, and nor formal recommendation could be made to the Board of Supervisors. However, members present shared a general sentiment in support of the project. There were no public comments made on this item. And lastly, the project was also heard by the Planning Commission on July 28th of this year. There were no public comments made for this item at the hearing, and the commission voted to recommend the board approve the proposed project. Following staff's review, it was determined that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, the Vineyard Community Plan, and the zoning code. The proposed development is compatible with surrounding uses as conditioned, and the environmental document concluded that there would be no significant environmental concerns, and the project was also both supported by DRAQ and CPAC. Along with this, I do want to note various key conditions with these requests, including Conditions 8 through 16, which relate to operational conditions for the car wash, convenience store, and service station. These items or conditions limit the hours of operation for the car wash. There's also conditioning requiring the masonry wall along property lines when adjacent to residential zone property, as well as various conditions requiring additional security measures for the site. Along with that, the Sheriff's Office also provided recommended conditions related to the off-sale of alcohol on site. Conditions 90 through 109 relating to the PCN requests include limiting the hours of sale of alcoholic beverages, as well as lighting and signage requirements, and other various conditions relating to site security. With this, Planning Environmental Review staff recommends the Board of Supervisors take the following actions. For the development portion of the request, determine the environmental analysis prepared pursuant under CEQA as adequate and complete, and adopt a mitigated negative declaration. Adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Adopt the ordinance amendment, approve the conditional use permit, and finally project in substantial compliance with design guidelines. All of these subject to findings and conditions. And for the PCN portion of the request, in accordance with the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control Regulations, staff presents the following request for letter of public convenience or necessity with a recommendation for approval. Before I conclude my presentation, I just want to reiterate that staff did previously brief Supervisor Kennedy and confirm that he is comfortable with this item proceeding in his absence. We do have the applicant team present available to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Christian, is this the first time you've appeared before the board, presented before the board?
Second.
Second? Okay. All right. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Any questions of staff? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and hear from applicant or applicant's representative.
Good morning, Board Chair and Supervisors. My name is Kurt Wagonect. I'm with K-12 Architects, and I've been sworn in. The owner is also here if you need to talk to him. We do approve all the conditions that have been placed on the project. You had a specific question on the landscaping. Landscaping really doesn't block sound, per se. I mean, there might be...
It can mitigate.
Very small reduction. We have a commercial site next to us, and so sound wasn't a major issue. Usually, it's with the residential lot that's in the back, and we're 150-plus feet away from that. So we would... And we also have a CMU wall.
I've approved enough car washes in my time here to know that... and used car washes, to know that especially the drying mechanisms at the end of a car wash cycle can be extremely loud. And that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
It's kind of a standard question for me, so...
And that's... And that is facing Calvine Avenue, so the street noise will... By the time our noise gets to the street, the street noise will be greater.
Okay. All right. Any questions from board members? Seeing none? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
There is none, Chair.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and move the recommended action.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Looking at County Council, we can just take one action on this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to just adopt staff's recommendation. Please vote.
That item does pass unanimously with those members present.
Very good. Thank you.
Our next item is item number 40. This is an authorization to purchase and acquire military equipment in the future in accordance with the military equipment policy.
Good morning.
I'm Lieutenant James Petrinovich. I'm the Sheriff's Tactical Commander. And before I get into our short presentation, I'd like to play a video.
We can press play, Metro?
I do it. ... outlined under AB 481 to enhance the safety of our deputies and the community. These tools are critical in helping to resolve high-risk critical incidents and complete complex investigations, such as human trafficking and organized retail theft. The following videos highlight how these tools can help de-escalate situations and safeguard the community. In this video, you can see how officers are utilizing the cover of the Bearcat as they are being shot at. This is an example of one of our EOD robots on the same incident, able to breach the locking mechanism on the door and quickly causing our suspect to surrender. This is one of the reasons that we're requesting some replacement drones, because they often get swatted down or destroyed. This is our Rook platform. We place this up there to provide a citizen rescue. Her family member was armed and barricaded inside, and she was unable to get out the front, and we were able to effect a rescue.
It's okay. We got you, ma'am. It's okay. Don't put me on the ground. We won't.
I would also like to say that all these incidents occurred during the last 12 months. This man lit his house on fire after committing multiple crimes. You can see there with the thermal imaging from our drones, we're able to see him contrasting with... When you take it off, you can immediately lose the person. And the right hand, he's holding a burned-up drone. This is our drone locating booby traps. Those are multiple cups filled with gasoline, trying to prevent us to gain entry into that door. If we weren't able to see that, we may have accidentally caused the fire. This man broke into a young woman's apartment for unknown reasons and stabbed her with a piece of glass. After hours of negotiating, he refused to come out, and we were able to use chemical agents to successfully convince him to surrender. This is a murder suspect's home. You can see our Bearcat recover at the top of the screen in our Rook, using a hydraulic ram to push in the door so that officers do not have to go forward. In this clip, this is a gun store owner, and when he came out, we were able to use the drone to see that that holster was empty and that he was in fact not armed. And we also have, I think, a PowerPoint presentation. We previously talked about our current inventory in our last Board of Supervisors, but I wanted to talk about some of the newly requested pieces of equipment. Currently, you saw that we're using our Bearcats routinely. I think that we're at least at 100 deployments of our Bearcat. This is the bread and butter of our patrol and our SWAT officers. It's a piece of specialized equipment for law enforcement that we can stand behind and essentially have cover. It also allows us to do other things, like it has a hydraulic ram on it, and other features that help keep us safe and keep us from having to move up with just personnel. Our 2008 Bearcat is running on fumes at this point. Sorry for the pun. And the replacement is 18 months to two years out. So we would like approval to start this process, to get some funding together, and at least get an order going so that we can replace that older, worn-down Bearcat.
Can I... I'm sorry. Can I interrupt the flow here a little bit? So with reference to what you just said, in terms of getting funding, so as you know, we allocate... we, the board, allocate basically one lump sum amount during... you know, we allocate, we, the Board, allocate basically one lump sum amount during our recommended and final budget hearing process every year. Are you talking about grant funding separate from general fund?
I believe that we're looking at Tucker funds for this, which would obviously require further approvals from the Board for, for this item. Approval here today, to my understanding, does not mean that we just go out and purchase this thing, that it requires further steps that involve the Board.
Here's, and maybe this is more for Mr. Jones, what I'm, would, you know, raise an eyebrow about would be, we approve a recommended or a final budget, and then is there, because this is running on fumes, is there any potential that there would be some dire need for it mid, mid-year and that even more funds on top of what we've budgeted through general fund and other revenue sources for the Sheriff's Department? Is that a possibility that we would have, that this Board would be asked to do that? Or how would, how would that happen, or how would that be considered?
Yes, Chair. So Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice. So this presentation, as Lieutenant mentioned, is authorization to procure these, but to actually procure them and purchase them, when, when or if that would occur, it would have to come back to the Board as a, as a separate item. And as mentioned, the Tucker Fund is a special fund specific to vehicles for the Sheriff's Office.
And maybe, Mr. CEO, is, I just want to, again, understand this a little bit better. Is this something, for instance, that we would expect from the Sheriff, let's say in June of '26, that there would be some reference in, formal or otherwise, in the lead-up to the Board's consideration of the recommended budget, that you might have in discussions with Sheriff Cooper about that need, and that you would expect that he would plug that into his, his recommended budget, or, you know, again, and maybe even in an informal way relative to what you ultimately recommend to the Board?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding, but I'm not sure, I'd have to double-check on the Tucker funds. I think the Tucker funds aren't necessarily included in the budget.
That's why, that's why I'm asking all these questions.
Yeah, let me, let me double-check on that and get back to you. Let me just send a quick note and see where the Tucker, I just want to make sure that the classification of that Tucker fund.
I got County Council in the queue, too, so she might be able to shed some light.
Right, and I, and I could possibly be speaking out of turn, but I believe the reason why they're asking for it right now is because, as you recall, in the AB 481, the Sheriff is required to request from the Board of Supervisors authority to purchase these equipment. So I think that, I'm assuming that the amount is already budgeted, and they're asking for authority to purchase them.
I don't want, yeah.
Under, under this, under the, because it's required under the state law. So that is the purpose of this hearing.
Right.
And so I think that is likely what is happening here.
Thank you, that's helpful. I don't want to assume, I need to know. So I see someone else is at the podium, so maybe we're going to go a little deeper on this.
Jennifer Griffin, the Chief of Departmental Administrative Services with the Sheriff. So the Tucker Fund is kept, the funds come, are kept in a fund balance account that are outside of the general fund. So when it comes time to spend it, we do come to the Board, and we have to add the budget appropriations for both decreasing the fund balance and adding it. The purchases will go through the general fund, but not with general fund dollars.
And where does the Tucker Fund live?
It lives in a fund balance account in a different fund within the county.
But that, but that-
Separate from the general fund.
But that, that's not something that is with the Sheriff's Department, that's something that's with finance, or?
That's, that's a piece I need to double-check, and I have somebody coming down to speak specifically to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt the flow of your presentation.
Is there any more questions about the Bearcat?
Is, is this a photo of the existing one?
That is a stock image.
Okay, I was gonna say, that looks pretty, pretty new.
The ones inside are, in the video, were our Bearcats.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right, thank you.
The wording on this slide, I apologize, is a little bit in error. It says, "Request to expand the current drone fleet by 19." That's not the intention of the Sheriff, to not expand our, our drone program. We're looking to possibly replace any outdated, destroyed equipment that we come across, and 481 requires us to give detailed descriptions of each thing. So we don't know which of these that we will be replacing those tools with, but this gives us a little bit of a menu to choose from, depending on how much we're willing to spend on upgrading or replacing these, these drones.
Excuse me, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just curious, what is a remotely stationed docked drone?
So these two at the bottom, these are going to be part of the Drone as a First Responder Program. We've already piloted, another pun, I apologize, this program in some of our divisions, and these are docked drones that live on rooftops of station houses or firehouses, and they can respond to calls for service in conjunction with or instead of an officer. We've had great success with it. We're in the final stages of getting FAA approval, line-of-sight approvals, some, some kind of complex things, but we're hoping to move to, if you're familiar with Elk Grove, is looking at where, where we have some docks stationed on various buildings with radiuses that they're able to travel to, and then would be remotely viewed and controlled. Thank you for your question.
Before you leave the drone slide, it's, my understanding in my briefing yesterday, the issue of drones, I think that were deployed, used by Sheriff's Department for monitoring suspected illegal fireworks, actually produced quite a bit in terms of the ability to document from which addresses aerial, dangerous aerial fireworks were being ignited, and so I just wanted to share that we've, I don't know if we all heard the same thing from, from the County CEO and his staff yesterday, but that's something I don't see in this slide, and maybe it's in a subsequent slide, but that is something, that being the unfortunate popularity of illegal fireworks in our, across the entire county and cities therein, is something that continues to be a great challenge to us. So I would just argue that the drones come in very handy for making sure that we can try and suppress that very dangerous practice.
Yes, sir, thank you for acknowledging that. The last thing that the Sheriff's Office is requesting is a Boston Dynamics Spot robot. This is going to replace some of our older EOD equipment that is no longer able to be serviced. The defining characteristic here is the arm. Our older robot also has an arm that allows it to manipulate items, possible bombs, without exposing our officers to the source of that device. Additionally, it will, will add CVRN, those are chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear capabilities, so that it can detect terrorist incidents, something that we want to make sure that we continue to have those capabilities. There's some other things that can be used for in a SWAT function, sending the robot in, it's got cameras, it's got this arm. One of the problems we have is manipulating interior doors. There's not a lot of safe ways to get in there and do that. This robot allows us to open those doors to continue with a drone search or a K-9 search before sending officers in.
Does, does this, would this unit replace what we saw in the video, which looked like kind of a tracked wally?
Unit, yeah. No, it's not going to replace that large robot. It's actually a smaller robot that is tracked, and it has, it has an arm on it.
Gotcha.
And that's the extent of the request for the Sheriff's Office this year.
Pretty good. We'll start with the County CEO.
Supervisor Amanda Thomas is down here from our budget, our Budget Chief. She has some, it is, Tucker Fund is a restricted fund that would, you would probably see it in the budget request as a funded growth request, is probably what you're more familiar with, and then that money would be transferred in for that purchase, but I'll let her add a little bit more.
Good morning, Chair Serna, members of the Board, Amanda Thomas, Chief Fiscal Officer. As David said, so we budget for department restricted funds and a separate fund from the general fund, and then that money is often transferred into the general fund to offset costs, so there's no use of discretionary resources in the general fund for those purchases.
So for '25, '26, final, it's, the, the funds are there, and now this, per state law, based on what County Council explained earlier, is simply the, the fact that, by state law, the Board has to receive this presentation, understand the need, but the funding is already staged, so to speak, to be used, is that correct?
So, yes, I think that that is correct. I think you will see sometimes during the year, right, that we will make budget adjustments, which might, might be the result of identifying additional resources that are available or additional needs.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you for the presentation. You know, I'm a, I'm a very strong supporter of using military equipment to combat crime. This past weekend, we had in York County five officers shot at, three were killed. I'm going to, I haven't looked at the details of the story, but I'm going to assume that they didn't have the equipment to be able to tackle the issue that originated from a domestic violence. So I'm a, I, I support ordering the new Bearcat. I'm a big supporter of using drones. I, I believe, if I remember correctly, I don't know why the number 65 drones were requested or to be purchased or replaced from the meeting in June, I can't remember, I don't know why that 65 numbers.
I, I want to say that maybe we have 53 current drones.
Okay.
And then adding it, but that's not our intention. Our intention is to replace outdated equipment to upgrade some things.
Yeah, I, I, I support the purchase of that, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, any other questions? Don't see any. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign to speak on this matter?
We do. Our first speaker this morning is Barb Ram.
Could I get this? There we go. Let you organize it, thank you. I have so many sheets like that because I was reviewing the, not the Sacramento County Sheriff report, because there are absolutely no details in the Sacramento County Sheriff's report. So I had to review the SACPD report, which is actually much more detail-oriented, but still not enough. So what hap, what I found is that the Bearcats were used 100% of the time during this May to May or April, a 12-month period, for high-risk search warrants. And so high-risk search warrants are never, where is the call coming from? It's a search warrant, so it's not an immediate, in this second, we have to make this decision. So just wanted to say that. But when you add all of the, there were 398 in the SACPD uses of military equipment. So what is the percentage of failure? District Four, any guess? Just, just guess how many times the military equipment use failed? They were unable to do anything? 40% of the time. A failure rate of 40% of the time. Failure. They are unable to do anything. That's SACPD. Again, we have no Sheriff report that actually gives us any detail. So I just wanted to, I, how many times can we go over this? That there's no detailed report? He can do little presentations that make people look really bad and that they're actually using it and it's successful, but there's no detail, there are no details. So I didn't understand, and there was only in a 12-month period, from what I got from the Sheriff, only they used it 161 times. Honestly, there's just no use for, and the drones, the drones are specifically so inaccurate, and so it's such a failure rate. This one right here, the scene assessment, 49 out of 101 times it failed to do anything, that's 48%. But if you add in nine times that it was used for fire, then you get 58% of the time, they don't even need the drone. So if the fire department needs a drone, get the fire department a drone. Why do they have to have a Sheriff or a SACPD drone using it for the fire department? Honestly, honestly, failure, 40% failure.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Mr. Keon Bliss.
I'm urging you to vote no on preapproving this request, given that it's standing direct violation of Assembly Bill 481 or Government Code Sections 770 through 775. I mean, they admit in the staff report that they cannot confirm that these purchases will occur, which directly undermines the very purpose of AB 481, which is to ensure that we're purchasing equipment that is actually necessary because there's no reasonable alternatives, and that those purchases are cost-effective. For example, under Government Code Section 771, governing bodies explicitly states that governing bodies may only approve military equipment policies and their purchases if it meets four minimum requirements, one of which is it is necessary because there is no reasonable alternative for ensuring both civilian and officer safety. And secondly, that the equipment is reasonably cost-effective compared to recent available alternatives. The Sheriff is requesting more than $1 million in purchases, including 450, that Boston Dynamics robot is valued at over $450,000, which, mind you, the Sheriff already has nine robots, all of which are valued at $450,000 combined. So this one robot, which it, which the Sheriff has never reported using any of its robots until this one video, it's not in its report, you're, were expected to approve, pre-approve for a purchase of $450,000, a single robot to, like, valued at the expense of the entire fleet. And they also want a new Bearcat, which I would remind you, the Board of Supervisors purchased a new Bearcat for the Sheriff just three years ago. None of this equipment is cost-effective, especially since at least five other law enforcement agencies in Sacramento County already have their own robots and armored vehicles available for mutual aid should the Sheriff need it. In fact, there's already precedent. Sacramento Police Department was borrowing the Rook that you saw in that video for years without issue. So that provides plenty of reasonable alternatives to exist. And not to mention the more troubling fact that we continue to waste county funds on military equipment when these weapons are disproportionately used against black and brown residents, including 40, including 45% of the 109 military equipment deployments just in, between, in 2024 alone.
Can you wrap up, please?
This is, yes, this is the third year that we're seeing this, and at the end of the day, this request is fiscally irresponsible, it's unnecessary, and it's unlawful under state law.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Vignoci.
Good morning, Board. My name is John Vignoci. I'm the CEO of Region Business, a local coalition of business leaders focused on helping Sacramento realize its full potential, and we're here in support of the Sheriff's Office. Believe this equipment and how it's used is completely appropriate. I've met a lot of the black and brown communities, specifically like North Sacramento that Keon references, and if you ask them, they actually really are very pro-law enforcement, because usually it's their neighbors, where, their neighborhoods where the crime is occurring, and they need the resources to actually combat crime. And you look at how crime impacts economic investment, it's very difficult, for instance, to open a grocery store in North Sacramento compared to East Sacramento. And so with crime, I mean, crime and criminal justice is a foundation of society and enforcing law and order, and the officers need the equipment to do their job, and it's, I think it's kind of silly that drones are considered military-use equipment when you can take a lot of those DGI drones and go use them for filming your kid's soccer game. Here, this equipment, as I think is appropriately demonstrated in the video, keeps the officer safe, it keeps the community safe, it helps de-escalate situations. I think in instances where they're shown as not being used, it's because they're not, you know, because the situation de-escalated, or maybe they sent a drone and they didn't end up needing it. So, yeah, I think we're in total support of common sense, and I just want to hear, be here to support our law enforcement officers and all the hard work that they do. So thank you.
Thanks, John.
And our final speaker is Norma Nelson.
Excuse me, Supervisor, okay, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Norma Nelson. I'm here representing the Black American Political Association of California Sacramento Chapter.
Excuse me, I, I want to make sure you have uninterrupted time. If there's not going to be decorum kept in these chambers, I'm happy to take a recess. Okay, we're going to start your clock fresh. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Norma Nelson. I'm representing the Black American Political Association of California Sacramento Chapter. I live in the Natomas District, your district chair, and thank you for this opportunity. In May of this year, there was a presentation made to the Sheriff Community Review Commission concerning this issue. I'd like to call to your attention that the county is not in compliance with AB 481, and nor is it following its own policies. There was a public records request that was made with regards to a copy of the ordinance that you, that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors concerning AB 481 and how the community engagement piece was supposed to be implemented. That public records request was made to the Board Clerk. It has not been responded to yet, and when this item on 481 was presented to the Community Review Commission, Sheriff Review Commission, there was a, there were questions asked about this ordinance. None of the commissioners knew anything about this ordinance that you had adopted, that the board had adopted in 2022. There was a specific question that was asked about the disproportionate use of military equipment in black and brown communities, and the question was around what would the sheriff department do in order to reduce those disparities in terms of how the military equipment is disproportionately used in black and brown community? The response was nothing. I also, there was also a question asked about whether or not military equipment would be used under the direction of the federal government, for instance, in ICE enforcement and protests involving the federal government. And there was not a clear answer provided for that as well. So I'm asking you, the Board of Supervisors, to make sure that the Sacramento County government complies with state law, and AB 481 is one of them, as well as use of deadly force policies within the sheriff's department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does that conclude our speakers?
That concludes our speakers.
All right, very good. We'll start with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First, I'd just like to ask either the county executive or the deputy county executive sitting behind him to provide me a briefing after this on compliance with 481 and what was brought up as far as the allegations that are being made. I long for a world where these type of tools are not needed, but I support their purchase. So I would be happy to move the attached resolution.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I think we still have some more comments and questions. We'll go to Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Lieutenant, for the, the presentation and clarifying some of the, the mechanics on, on the purchases. I too am supportive of, of the item. I think it's indisputable that this kind of technology has resulted in safer outcomes for both officers and members of the public. So I think these are, are prudent items and encourage the sheriff to acquire them. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll just add, before we vote, I have to admit, I was, I think now years ago, I think I, I had a healthy amount of skepticism about some of the equipment, and I've certainly posed lots of questions in past hearings. I've taken the time to actually go out to Mather, see for myself, the equipment up close. For instance, I had a chance when, there's a lot of debate here, and especially at the city of Sacramento, about what the Rook is and what the Rook isn't, seeing for myself what the, the equipment constitutes. But I, I think for me, understanding the fact that, and I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Lieutenant, but it seems to me that a good, I don't know if it's a majority of time, but it seems like it, that oftentimes the equipment, whether it's drones, whether it's the Rook or the Bearcat or the robots, that, that they're being used kind of in a more of a defensive scenario. And I think your video pointed out that it's, in fact, the Rook can be used to kind of extract civilians that would otherwise maybe be in line of fire, that kind of thing. So I, like my colleagues, I think have a healthy amount of concern and questions about it. I think that's always good to have, and that's why we have these hearings. But I do see the, the utility, again, as it relates to promoting the safety of our public in some of these unfortunate situations, as well as our officers. So I will be supporting the motion today. And just before we vote, any concerns or questions from our county council about this question about whether we're meeting the letter of the, the state law?
No, no concerns.
Okay, very good. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously with those members present?
All right. Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is item number 41. It's the board to consider nominations to the following.
Hold, hold on. We're in recess. Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll of the steps for quorum?
Supervisors Desmond, Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Do we do have a quorum?
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is item is to the board to consider nominations. And so we do have continuing to October the 7th, the Adult and Aging Commission, Carmichael Community Planning Advisory Council, Carmichael Recreation and Park District, the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Council, the North Highlands Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Also continuing to the meeting of October the 21st is Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Fithill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Public Health Advisory Board, Sacramento County Treasury Advisory Committee, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. That leaves us for our items today. The first is the Assessment Appeals Board. Chair Serna, there are 10 seats. Looking for nominations?
I'd like to reappoint Teresa Chan, David Gao, and continue the remainder to November 4th.
Thank you. And Supervisor Serna, there is one District Four nomination for the Cemetery Advisory Commission.
District Four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Please continue to October 7th.
I was giving you a new district. My apologies.
One's enough.
No trades.
And so for Supervisor Rodriguez, there is two District Four nominations for the Casamnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to October 7th.
And Chair Serna, for the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, there are 15 seats.
Please continue to October 7th.
And for the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Commission, Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to October 7th.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Please continue to October 7th.
And Supervisor Hume.
I'd like to nominate Javon Williams to the public interest seat and waive the process.
Second.
And that item does pass unanimously?
And I'll continue the remainder to October 7th.
Thank you. And that concludes our boards and commissions, nominations, and appointments today. That brings us to item number 42, which is the county executive comments.
Thank you, Nicole. Just real quick, wanted to remind the board about three years ago, we started a journey to replace our current tax system. Our tax system was built, I think in the late, early 70s, late 70s, and we are now live with that system. So the board has invested and trusted us to make that conversion and move that over. Right now, we are distributing and collecting approximately $3 billion worth of annual tax revenue, and just in case folks are wondering, that $3 billion does not come just to the county. We also collect it for the, all the cities. We collect it for school districts, community colleges, special districts, libraries, and a host of other folks that we collect on those. Some of the benefits that we see coming out of this is electronic billing, so folks will be able to get their billings electronically, improved customer service, and also the ability to pay with e-checks with no cost and faster refunds and payments being processed. So I just wanted to recognize the team for launching this recently and getting the new system out there, but in addition, thanks to the board for your trust and investment in county staff over the last three years to put this in place. It's been incredibly successful project and look forward to using this new system and shutting down our antiquated system, which we can no longer find programmers to maintain. They don't exactly send out Cobalt programmers in, at a college nowadays, so, but thank you for your investment. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to comments by board members. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I am honored to recognize Gertrude Dunn, a North Highlands resident, on her 100th birth, 100th birthday. Reaching 100 is an extraordinary milestone and a testament to a life filled with resilience, dedication, and meaningful contributions to her family, friends, and community. She is an example of strength and commitment to those around her, and it's truly inspiring. On behalf of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, congratulations, Gertrude, wishing you a very happy 100th birthday. And then I also have two board requests. One of them is you all received a copy of a request I had of county council to look into a potential temporary tax to fix roads. I would like to request that the item be brought to the board for discussion in the near future, placing a temporary tax on the 2026 gubernatorial ballot dedicated to fixing roads, roads only, and bridges that the county are in the county's responsibilities in the unincorporated areas of Sacramento County, and to potentially give residents in the unincorporate the ability to decide whether this is something that they would like to do.
Okay.
Okay. And then the other request I have is we received a 2025 fireworks after ox, after-action review, and I would like to request that the board hold a workshop in the near future to discuss the recommendations from SAC Metro, the sheriff's office, and code enforcement, and to brainstorm additional strategies to achieve better results in 2026.
Okay. Mr. CEO, did you have any response to?
I, I just, a question, I just want to make sure I am clear on the tax discussion. That's something you'd like to bring forward in November, for the ballot for November of 2026?
Yes, for the November 2026.
And so in, in June, we brought forward a present, a recommendation for the board to have us seek out additional revenue opportunities. We plan on bringing that in January. Are you looking to put that at that same time or looking for something different?
Let me see, or September, October, November. If we can beforehand, that'd be great, but.
Well, this is the last meeting in September, so October, yeah.
Yes. I mean, I, I'm always, the sooner the better, but we can.
I, I think we can bring something forward just to put it in front of the board, because I believe there's other folks looking at this also, and we can also put together our, our cost analysis and timelines and bring some of those things forward also, if that's the will of the board.
Okay.
Can I encourage you, David, to have at least one conversation with Mr. Bucy, our executive director with STA, to ensure that whatever our staff is going to bring back isn't going to sap the time and energy away from that kind of simultaneous effort? I think many of us are very close to that process, and I think the last thing we want to see happen is, you know, inadvertently, is to, to lose any momentum on the STA front.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. In terms of the fireworks, I don't disagree that a new member, a relatively new member of this board should have the benefit of kind of where we've been. We've had multiple workshops and discussions over several years about the fireworks conundrum. And it's, it's one of those probably most difficult codes to crack here in Countyville in terms of how best to, to suppress the use of illegal fireworks. I think we are making some, some headway, but I think the vice chair deserves to have kind of the same comprehensive presentation that we've all received at various times about what we're doing and how we're doing it. And maybe that also gives us an opportunity, David, to take a little pride in some of the progress that we've been making, again, referencing what I was told yesterday in my, in our briefing about use of drones and that type of thing.
Yes, in, in the report, it talks about a 30% increase in admin fees. I want to say it was $74,000 or so of increased admin penalties, and I think they're doing a great job. And a special thanks to the sheriffs, and I think you said this earlier, but I was talking to Amanda, but special thanks to the sheriff's department and their assistance with their drones, too.
David, I would also like to see a comparison of the violations with other cities that took a strong approach on tackling fireworks, just so we can see the comparison of what the, the total violations that were built, sent out.
Will do.
Cities in our county or other counties?
Just in comparison, because we had, we had.
No, no, but I would, but other cities like in the state of California or other cities in the county?
No, 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 just local, local jurisdictions.
Local jurisdictions within the county?
Local jurisdictions within the county that tackled fireworks as well.
Keep for the clarification, I was thinking.
Thank you, yeah.
I was thinking regional one.
Very good. Okay, any other comments from board members? All right, seeing none. We do have closed session, and if there's no further business in front of this board, we stand adjourned.